August 23rd, 2018. You're hereby notified that a call meeting on the, of the City Commission is to be called to be held at the regular meeting place of the City Commission in City Hall 201 North Second Street in the city of Palatka to begin at 5:15 on Thursday, August 23rd, 2018. The purpose of the meeting is to consider the following. First reading of the ordinance concerning Planning Board's August 17th, 2018 recommendation on the request to rezon 200 South Seventh Street from DB Downtown Business to C1 General Commercial, Putnam County Charter is the applicant. Number two's request is to hear a request for discussion on the SHP Phase Two redevelopment property from Sanjay Patel. And three, the City Attorney's report on the Christianer Group report. Please govern yourselves accordingly. At this time, we're gonna have our invocation. I'm gonna ask if Pastor Ty Fields would come up at this time and lead us in the invocation and also in the pledge.
As the bodyhead, I want to God to be thankful, thank you for the day God, uh, for allowing us to be in the presence of God, and for God not to judge, but to be with him. For he is the God that has his heart, that has my eyes and my soul, so that we may think of you as we're discussing real topics that are, that's at hand, God, and that you do. Amen.
Thank you very much Pastor Phil.
The flag of the United States of America and the two republics for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and every being in itsness.
Thank you very much Pastor Phil.
Mayor, I've wanted you out of the Tony agenda, you're gonna be withdrawn, I can't mention, if you let me announce that, I will when it's ready.
Real call please.
Mayor Terrell Elville.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mary Lawson Brown.
Hi.
Commissioner Rikin Coram.
Present.
Commissioner Justin Campbell.
Present.
Commissioner Tammy McCaskill.
Here.
All members are present and accounted for, and you have a quorum.
Thank you. Mr. Horns, you have information for us?
I do. I was contacted by an attorney who advised me, he was representing in SHP Hospitality Inc., and advised me that they would not be appearing tonight as to item two that's on the agenda. That does not mean that they are not wishing to discuss the question of the city's repurchase of what's known as Phase Two, but he indicated he would likely have a attorney-to-attorney discussion before anything was brought to the City Commission, and that he was not going to appear tonight, and neither was Mr. Patel, so I advised him that I would advise the commission of that. We do have a, at least a tentative deadline of September 2nd for us to complete the repurchase of the Phase Two property. However, I have advised the SHP Hospitality Group that the city is ready, willing, and able to, to close, have asked them for a closing date between August 27 and, the week of August 27, which is next week, and provided in specifics as to purchase price and closing numbers. So I believe that we've perfected and protected our rights to, to, to close within the timeframe that's, that's been allotted, and I believe he may even send us something to acknowledge that they intend to waive or in some fashion acknowledge that we were ready to close so that that would not work against us if we don't get a closing done by the end of next week. So, I anticipate this matter to be brought back in front of you at a later day.
I understand the motion to remove item three from the agenda is printed.
Second. I think that's two.
It's three, it's showing three on the updated, we have updated.
I'm sorry, I've got an old agenda.
Are we gonna restate the motion?
Thanks.
Just listed it three. The motion is correct. Is there any further discussion on the motion?
Question.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item one, public comments. Public comments will be limited to three minutes. There will be no action taken on items in discussion for public comments. Anyone here to speak during public comment, please fill out a yellow speaker's card like this in the back of the room so that your comments will be accurately kept for record. Is there anyone here for public comment on items other than those on the agenda? Seeing no one, we'll close public comment. Moving on to item two is an ordinance. Planning Board recommendation to rezon 1.57 acres at 200 South Seventh Street from DB Downtown Business to C1 General Commercial, Putnam County High School, the applicant first reading.
An ordinance of the city of Palatka, Florida, providing that the official zoning map of the city of Palatka, Florida be amended from Putnam County DB Downtown Business to C dash one Commercial General, with the parcel identified as 200 South Seventh Street, located in the section 42 Township 10 South Range 27 East, providing per se verability and providing an effective date.
Second. This is the motion on the floor, and it's second. Mr. Rockley, will you please?
Sure. Just a brief description of the property, I'm sure you're all familiar with the site. It is currently surrounded by commercial land use and zoning properties, this is out, there is some residential. The two zoning districts are Downtown Business and C1, very similar districts, others. In terms of the criteria, in the code, section 94 dash three, there's very little to suggest something different about this zoning that would be worthy of discussion or analysis. The only difference is that the C1 district does provide for schools as a conditional use. The planning commission has acted on this item on August 17th. They have recommended approval of the rezoning for this first reading this evening. They also made a, an approval of the conditional use contingent upon City Commission approval of the rezoning. So, if the rezoning is successful, the conditional use will go into effect with the conditions as adopted by the planning board. As to presentation, any questions that you have?
I have.
Yes, sir.
Well, C1 versus downtown, would that have anything to do with maybe larger tractor-trailers and other vehicles maybe coming through with, like C1 Commercial?
There's a lot of uses allowed in DB that are allowed in C1, so there's very small differences really between the two districts. Scale isn't really addressed tonight, but one. There are, there are some differences, the Downtown Business District, primarily for the storefronts along St. John's have some design standards in terms of the frontages and the proportions. There's also requirements for parking in C1 that don't exist in DB. The DB District hasn't had parking requirements, but the C1 District would have parking requirements. So there are those differences, but in terms of scale, there's really not any significant difference.
I just know they had problems with people, even coming down, I think, I think it was Creo, Creo.
Creo, a little bit.
Think they had problem with people coming down, Creo with all of those larger tractor-trailers and different things of that nature, but that was my concern.
Well, this zoning is only for the site of the Campbell building, that particular parcel.
Right.
So it's still surrounded by Downtown Business, and we are very familiar with the proposed use and existing buildings, so I don't anticipate any change that would be noticeable to anybody from the zoning.
It doesn't alter the background?
Yeah, just the specific area and not...
It doesn't change anything in the overall, it just, it only pertains to the area within the boundaries of this property.
That's, that's all.
So, all these years that that place, was a zoning property?
I, I don't know the history entirely, but the building predates your zoning.
I know.
So, it's, it was there, but, but the fact that it's a non-conformative use, if it had been continued as a use, it would still be a school, a useful place, but it is continued as a use as a school. It became an office for some period of time, and then it was just abandoned, vacant for a number of years too. So, it's a new use in our zoning perspective, I guess, and that's why we're making this request to change.
Any other questions for the commission?
Question.
None, we can't, we won't call a question yet. Open the floor for public here. Ms. Kittens, got a speaker card for Ms. Kittens. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item, please fill out a speaker card for me.
I did speak at the planning board, so I'm allowed to speak here just for the record. I fully support the, the change of the zoning. Campbell School has been a school for many, many years. After I appeared before the planning board and said it was started in 1929, my third grade teacher, Kathryn Nelson, a major, called me and told me she had a handwritten history of Campbell School that was done by my first grade teacher, Owen Merrill, and Miss Merrill said it was actually built in 1926, which makes it 92 years old. But anyway, it's always been a school, there's never been a problem, the, the joint property owners have never had a problem in only 89 to 92 years, it's a school. The school board took it over, that's the whole, the school, they don't send ours there, but it was somehow abandoned, the shirts off, been traded there almost every weekend, and I think Palatka PD did also. At the planning board hearing, nobody objected to it. I think the highest and best use is the school, and I would urge you all to please, vote in favor of what the planning board recommended. This is a very good thing for Downtown Palatka, it's a very good thing for our history, and it's a very good thing for Campbell Building. And Mr. Moore, just as a point of interest, Creole Avenue is State Road 20, which is governed by the State Department of Transportation, and a lot of folks aren't aware of that, they think it's a private road, so they have trouble with the big trucks coming down Creole Avenue as they turn. So, anyway, thank you all.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here for public here? Seeing no one, we'll close public here. Questions already been called by Commissioner Borum. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item three of the agenda, City Manager and Administrative Reports.
Four.
I'm sorry, four. Item three has been omitted. Item four, City Manager and Administrative Report, City Attorney, Mr. Holmes, discussion on the Christianer Group report.
Yes, this item is as well attributed to me as any, but it's not one that I'm trying to advocate the position on. I have sent an email to each of you, which included an email that I received from Mrs. Susan Erdley, who is the attorney that the city customarily uses for personnel matters, and just, and who they've been provided to the leaders of cities on a couple of previous issues that we have dealt with. She included some suggestions as to how I can move forward in this matter. My email, you forwarded her email along with my statement essentially concurring with the suggestions that you made. My email also indicates that I realize that the path that is charted in Ms. Erdley's email is not the only path that you could choose to proceed upon, and it's not my intent to indicate that there is only one right path on which to move forward in this matter. So, having said that, I don't know if there's a lot more I need to say unless there are questions, and if there are, then I'm happy to ask or answer, or attempt to answer any question that you have.
Any questions for the commission?
Seeing none, I'll make a statement. I've read both the recommendations from you and Ms. Erdley. I've sent over my sentiments as it relates to this particular matter. I admittedly, I, I mean, I admittedly deny the allegations in the complaint. I think that the timing of this is both politically motivated and, and very peculiar. I will tell you that I am absolutely disturbed to learn that the firm that completed the report riddled with errors may have a prior relationship with our former city manager. I'm extremely concerned about the inaccuracies and the errors performed in the report at the blatant attempt to discredit my reputation and the things that we've built throughout this community. But the other thing I'll tell you is I'm, I'm absolutely blessed to be surrounded by people in this community who care. I am grateful that this report came out on my birthday, first without my mother and my father, 46 years old, the first time I had to deal with that, so it's a day of new beginnings. It was an opportunity to be celebrated by the Florida League of Mayors and by Business Watch as they gave us an award for our work in race relations. And so, while local folks were throwing rocks and hiding their hand and trying to damage my reputation, the state recognized the growth and the movement in this community. And so, my biggest concern is that we moved this community forward, that we moved the staff forward, that we moved the city forward. Four years of work that we've done thus far, standing for themselves. I won't lay down and let anybody accuse me of something I didn't do, giving you a letter of appeal that goes directly to that. I definitely appreciate the city attorney looking over that letter and coming to the same conclusion that the Palatka Daily News came to, along with many of the citizens in this community. But I will not lay down, let anyone lie on me and try to damage my character. I've worked my entire life to be a servant for the community, and I'll continue to do that, but I in no way will accept anything less than the truth.
Ma'am, um, ma'am, may I say? I'm working real slowly today, y'all, y'all can, can count that up as a, but to do the job that we do is a sacrifice, and everybody cannot do what we do. People think they do, but it is really a sacrifice for us and our families. We, we work very hard to try to take care of everybody, especially those who cannot take care of themselves. And there's nothing worse than dirty politics, I don't care where it's coming from. None of this stuff came up before the election time, and all of us have had flames and arrows thrown at us since we, well, they may not have, but I have, since, since I sat here. We need, when people tell us stuff, when I first got elected, I had somebody come and tell me, Ms. Brown, they, they laid me off, and he just went on and on, and I went and kinda chewed some people out about treating him like that, and I found out he got a check on Thursday and they didn't see him anymore till Tuesday. So, that, we, we need to understand that when people make accusations, my grandma said that dog bring a bone, okay, and so we need to think of the source of where these accusations are coming against our, our mayor. If you look at the record of this commission, we have done nothing but brought stuff and tried to do things that would help everybody. We tackle the water, getting water and sewer lines in the north and south and, and central historic district, that was a problem that happened 130-some years ago, and no other commission took on trying to get it done. That's something that started. Your riverfront has made a distinct change. All of us sitting here, most of us sitting here, not only work for the city of Palatka, but we working on the state and national level. These two young men here are now officers with the Florida Black Caucus, and they're on the Board of Directors there, and I sit on the Board of Directors for the Florida League of Cities and their executive board. So, when we step up, we taking time and energy and money, because city has been where, they have not been able to send us all the places we need to go, but we gone anyway, at our expense. And those of us that are in businesses, our business also suffers sometimes, 'cause y'all forget we in business, go somewhere else, but we have to work, and we have to take care of ourselves. And so, when people make accusations against us, at least talk to us or talk to someone who knows us, so that you can find out what truth is in it. I think it's a sad thing that our nation has come to, to have them to do slander to get elected, or have so much money to pay their way back in. You miss the good people, and if you all keep believing what you hear that's not true, you won't have anybody that'll sit up here, because everybody will be running from this dog, and you'll have nobody to go out and work and take care of you. Now, that's my, my daughter, they call me the city mama, but my granddaughter call me the city grandma, because I got these few young people up here, but that's grandma whip, and I hope y'all will take it to heart, and I hope y'all share and give our mayor some love, because it's nothing like being a team from this that you, that you do, thank you.
Seeing none, we got one speaker card, Reverend Ty Fields, senior.
Good evening. How y'all doing today, Mayor, Commissioner, and all of the leaders of the city of Palatka? God bless you, God keep you. Very quickly, I, I won't be before you long, but because I've been knowing the mayor for over 20-some years, I had to make sure I didn't make this personal or speak as friendly and speak as, speak about right and wrong. And so, if I had to put a title on this certain thing, on this thing that I'm about to put before you, I would tell you to wake up. We have someone who is compassionate, conscious, and concerned, and committed to serving an error, where serving has become extreme, disrespectful, and sinuous. In the Bible, that, that David talks about being a new age outlaw that God had commissioned to, to serve the people that were being suppressed, and here we have a new age outlaw in our mayor here that's willing to serve, and it's sitting accounted with some of the very leaders we have in these positions, want to be served instead of serving. We have a man that's willing to stand up and stand out on the very issues and concerns that are affecting and infecting our communities. In the midst of confusion, conflict, and collusion, we have a man that's still willing to serve, and I think that we as a community get excited and exuberant, because we say that, that's what we want. But yet, at the same time, our actions say differently, not because of what we hear, but a lot of times it is because of what we see, because in our minds and our way of thinking, and, and seeing something totally different. So my question to, to this evening is, does different matter as long as the work is being done? Does different matter as long as someone is constantly serving? Does different matter as long as we're getting results at the end of the day? And I'll leave you with something, I watched the movie with Lawrence Fishburne and Spike Lee, and he was trying to get the, the people to understand that, that they were being suppressed, that they were in bad situations, so he walked out one dusty evening, and he yelled to the people, he said, "Wake up!" So I commissioned to the city of Putnam, the county of Palatka, the city of Palatka, the county of Putnam, the citizens, to wake up. Amen?
Anyone else here for public comment? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Any further discussion from the commission?
Question.
Is there a motion?
I'm being tired.
Motion to adjourn.
Do we need action on this, Mr. Holmes?
No.
I do. Are we taking any necessary steps?
Yeah, I think that's very important for the citizens to know that we are taking steps.
Oh, you might, you might need to tell our school people what happened, 'cause some of them got that look on their face, they wasn't quite...
Ms. Pat was there, and she kinda knew, and she said thanks.
Okay, you might just need to sit. I looked at, I looked at some faces, and they looked kinda, what just happened? So ma'am, would you tell them?
We have the principal here, I think you, you stand up for us just for a second, and I think you understand that with...
So, I do understand, and I do appreciate your support, and you definitely got us, thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
So, in regard to the other matter, we have done, we have begun to do what Ms. Erdley had recommended. I'll, I'll repeat, this is not to be interpreted as an acknowledgement of any wrongdoing by any person, I'll repeat that if I need to. It's intended to make certain that we move forward on a right path and, and, and make certain that we're complying with every law and rule that, that, that we believe appropriate. So, having said that, what we have done is begun the process of scheduling training, which should occur anyway, for everybody, not one person, that essentially just reminds us of the role of the commission, elected body under a charter government. We have, I don't know if that has been actually specifically scheduled yet, but I think we've reached out to someone from out of town to come.
We have, we are negotiating with a team that is coming from the Florida League of Cities as the head, there is also a representative from the Florida FGFOA, and there is also a representative from the senior advisors from the Florida League of Cities who is going to cover all of that, so we need to coordinate their schedules, coordinate our schedules, and we'll get that settled.
And let me again emphasize, this is not to be considered remedial training, or whatever that word might mean, it's not to be considered as an acknowledgement, as I said, or a concession of wrongdoing. The job of an elected city commission is not always easy, even from the perspective of determining where your duties end, where your authority ends, especially if you're trying to move the ball forward. And these, this team exists and wasn't created for Palatka, it exists to provide training to governments all over the state of Florida. So, this team is designed and is going to be asked to come in and help remind us of what individual commissioners' responsibilities and duties and authorities are under our charter form of governance, something that I think is, is helpful and probably should be done periodically regardless of issues or complaints. In addition, we have done what Ms. Erdley suggested, which was to send a written document to an employee who had, who had made a complaint that led to the investigation at issue, basically stating that the complaint was taken seriously and that, as our charter and our law obligates us to do, and then investigation was undertaken. I think that all of you can understand that to do otherwise would have been to, to leave yourself open to a charge that you ignored, a complaint from an employee, which I don't think any of us would have wanted to have happen. So, the, the letter to the employee indicates that we took the complaint seriously, we called an investigation to be undertaken, that we are going to implement training and procedural updates to make certain that we observe any applicable rule or law pertaining to employees, and assure that employee that there is not going to be any retaliatory action taken against the employee or any other employee for either making the complaint or participating in an investigation, all of which I think anyone would agree is appropriate and, and proper. And so that's what we have done, Commissioner, and that's the process that we put in play. Also, and without, again, it isn't for me to critique the report or offer an opinion on the overall investigation, on the other hand, I well understand how helpless somebody can feel when accusations are made against them and they don't have a full forum in which to challenge the accusations. So, there's a quandary that the mayor's in, and this is, I'm not defending or accusing anyone, but there is a quandary that the mayor's in. He can choose to try to blow this whole thing up and try to pick it apart with a five-tooth comb, in which case the business of the city basically comes to a stop. People's feelings can get hurt, people can misinterpret what's done, or he can choose to try to move forward and, and essentially not spend a lot of time and money getting into the weeds on the accusation that was, that was made. And I say he can choose because obviously if he demanded that he be given an opportunity to in some fashion deal with the details of the report, I don't know exactly what the format of that would be, because there is no real format in city charter or in city government for that, but one could be, could be designed, but we turn all of this into some sort of a, of a, what amounts to a trial of some sort, but not one that's, that's conventionally provided for. There's no pattern for this. So, what the mayor could do if he chose to is write a response to the report in which he critiques or offers comments or responses to the report itself, so that there would be a, 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 amounts to a finding and a response from him that would go with the report and be given whatever way that anybody chose to give it. So, that's what we've done to this point, and there, there isn't a, in my opinion, there hasn't been any final action taken, there hasn't been a final path chosen. I guess there's a lot of discretion that's still available, but it looks like we're at least moving forward right now with the steps that I think all of us would agree are part in the city's best interest, which, which are to go ahead and get the training involved and to assure that any of the employees that participated in the investigation who were interviewed or that complained themselves that there won't be any retaliatory action taken. Is that your question?
So I guess my other question is, are we gonna look into, I guess, the origin of this investigation? My understanding is that the cost of this investigation is $7,500. It seems as though it may be in violation of our procurement policy. I would love to have an answer as to whether the, the way the investigation came about violated our procurement policy. It's kinda ironic that someone alleges that I violated the procurement policy.
You're not talking about me having alleged that, I saw you...
No, sir. Strictly pointed towards the Christianer Group.
And so, in my 19 years of practice in law, I can tell you that this is one of the least favorable reports that I've seen, riddled with errors, inaccuracies, and a whole bunch of assumptions, and even an outright disdain for what the charter puts in place for the commission as it relates to making decisions from, that come from recommendations from committees such as the Planning Board, Historic Preservation Board...
from committees such as the planning board, historic preservation board. Again, I admittedly deny the allegations, and we're going to move the city forward, but I would not accept any recommendations that come out of it. Not the recommendations, I will not accept any of the allegations or what's considered to be substantiated out of that report. Let the record so reflect. With that being said, we will move on to our committee reports, or to our management reports. Chief, what do you have for me?
Nothing, sir.
Ms. Becker?
Nothing, sir.
Ms. Robinson?
Nothing, sir.
Ms. Tucker, I don't see Mr. Griffin.
Not a thing.
Mr. Lachman?
Nothing, sir.
Am I missing any? Chief, I cannot miss you, you're six-eight.
I will.
Mr. Triggers?
I do need to schedule a couple of workshops. I'd like for you all to check your schedules for next Thursday, the thirtieth. I've talked to a couple of you, but not all of you. We need to hold a workshop for the water taxis. I estimate that to be maybe an hour. We also need to hold a workshop for the CRA, which we spoke about in the last CRA meeting. So, I was going to look at trying to get both of those workshops in on the thirtieth, if that's possible, and if people's schedules will allow. There's a lot to coordinate on that. So, if you guys could just individually get back with me, let me know if you're available. I'm about three P.M. on.
On the thirtieth?
On the thirtieth.
I don't think, I don't think we're going to do both of those on that.
Well, we can at least do one.
I just don't see how we can do it. I would think the CRA is probably more important, because we're dealing with budget.
Right.
That's just my thought. Any other thoughts, Commissioner?
I would want to call the meeting for the workshop for the water taxi. I think that's something that's not as time-sensitive, so I'll be willing to, you know, even if we might make a motion, we can-
I think kind of the CRA is a more important thing. See, if I recall correctly, the sentiment at that time is that we kind of, that we kind of dealt with, we dealt with the water taxi after the end of the fiscal year.
Yes.
It does have budget ramifications, though. It has, it could have huge budget ramifications.
The taxi?
Yes.
But it's a march.
We gotta, we gotta deal with that one too.
We gotta.
First reading is the first meeting of September, first meeting on September.
Do you want to try to start at two P.M.? Or do you want to just do it on two separate days?
I'm going to do it work for some of that day.
Yeah.
So, if we can, maybe we can do the early September workshop on the water taxi, and maybe find a date around the first meeting that we have in September. But-
September one is on budget, with the new budget kick.
September thirtieth. You know, whether we do it on two separate days or not, we're still going to have to take time off from work to meet.
It's going to be two days.
Yes.
Definitely.
So, I have a, I have a question. Being that our attorney said that there are financial obligations, would it make sense for us to go ahead and knock out the workshop with the water taxi and then utilize the work of the other meeting for the CRA, being that there may be things that come up at the workshop with the water taxi that we may need to discuss as the CRA?
Do you intend that any of the funding for the water taxis would come from the CRA budget?
A possibility. It's a possibility, so yeah, like, as I think the water taxi first.
I'm just asking a question, pleasure of the commission, but I'm just asking a question.
What you think?
It's going to be a workshop issue. I think where the funding comes from is going to be something that's going to be determined in the workshop.
We can always move stuff around, right?
All right, let's do the shift, back to the census. Should we do, should we do the CRA workshop first with the water taxis?
I'm flexible.
Yeah, I mean, so the water taxi, the CRA, I don't think there would be as many, I think we talked about their budget constraints and their budget reallocations at the workshop at the, or at the meeting. Therefore, I don't think that much will come out of that. I think that's more of a policy and procedure, maybe some of the programming that they want to do, unless we did decide to create a new TIF. I know that they were talking about something like that, where they pulling the downtown advisory group, or, so not a new TIF, but a new advisory group. So, I don't know if that would affect next fiscal year, or if you would want to implement it and then start a fiscal year after. It would be up to what that, so both workshops very well could have-
Budget ramifications, because they also want to talk about the north historic district, or the south historic district wants to talk about doing away with all of its programming success.
You guys are making my point for me. That's why we can't have both. So, which one are we going to have first?
I'm flexible.
As long as they're done by the thirteenth, or the week before.
The week before the thirteenth.
Somebody help me.
I say, look, go ahead and have the water taxi, get it over with, do, then focus on the CRA, so we'll be good.
Okay. Everybody agree?
I'm flexible.
You've been flexible. So, we're going to do the water taxi workshop first.
On the thirtieth.
On the thirtieth.
And looking at, how long?
She'll coordinate the time with you.
Mr. Holmes is, was asked to put together an agenda with about four points on it that need to go under discussion. They also need to coordinate with the Boathouse Marina, both the legacies.
Well, they should be, they, they need to be flexible.
You're right.
We need to make this happen, so they, whatever we-
So, would you say, split the difference and say three-thirty, because we've got a five-fifteen meeting, which we can go over, and we just can't start it earlier?
Five-fifteen?
Five-fifteen means what?
Five-fifteen on the thirtieth, with second reading on the rezoning ordinance. Oh, gosh. Right. We have to have a second reading on the rezoning ordinance before it passes. And so, that's scheduled for five-fifteen. We can start it later than five-fifteen, but we can't start it earlier than five-fifteen.
Let's start at four, and if we need to, and if we need to take a recess to deal with the five-fifteen meeting, come back to it, we'll be fine. So, that's what we're going to do.
That's better.
All right. Mr. Borum?
We're just moving the city forward, that's all the comments I have.
Commissioner McCaffrey?
I just want to say that I had an excellent time Saturday, Saturday at Mrs. Milton's seventy-seventh birthday party. It was beautiful, and it was, it felt good to be able to read that proclamation for her in honor of us, so.
And she was thrilled with you being there.
Oh, thanks.
And I missed you guys. We missed you too.
Vice President Bro.
I'd like to say that we just got back from our conference, and all of us are hardworking, and I already told you that. We have members that are sitting at the big seats, they helping to make decisions for not only the city, but for the state, with both our mayor and commissioners Campbell. And I was fortunate enough to get back on the board of directors, and the new president has put me on his executive board. So, I want y'all to know, when you, when you put us here, we don't put us here just for Palatka. We're making an impact for you all. People know where Palatka is, I bet you now. When I got here, they didn't, you say, "Where is Palatka?" And you have to say, "She probably close to just..." Now, you say, "Where is Palatka?", they know where Palatka is.
And just for the record, she's the second longest-standing member on the executive board for Florida League of Cities. Not just, not that she's just on the board, she's the second oldest member, she's been there since nineteen ninety-nine. It's four hundred and thirty-two.
So, y'all take, take somebody else, take seven to vote, not five, not four. Take seven other people with you, because the election coming up, not me, because I ain't running. But just the people, and if y'all feel like you're doing a good job, then you need to put it out.
I don't think there's much to say on that.
But, um, we just, like I said, we just got back from Hollywood with the Florida League of Cities, and I'm honored to announce that I was elected as the secretary for the Florida Black Caucus, as well as appointed to the Municipal Administration Committee for the Florida League of Cities. It's a big deal for me that we, I have the opportunity to represent Palatka, not only on the state, I mean, the local level, but on the state level as well. And I kind of enjoy and honor and honor the citizens of this great city for all the responsibility served. And as I stated, we are the members of this city.
Following in suit, it was an honor, again, to serve with the Florida League of Cities. I got an award, a catalyst grant that one of only five cities in the state got from the Florida League of Mayors, and also, in relation to racial studies circles and our work that we've done in this community on race relations. Aside from that, I was a member of the nominating committee for the Florida League of Mayors, also a member of the nominating committee for the Florida League of Cities. I was elected to the board of directors for the Florida League of Mayors for the, for a second year. I also was elected as the regional coordinator for the northern region for the Florida Black Caucus, the locally elected officials. And I sit on the resolutions committee for the Florida League of Cities as well. So, our work is done in, not only in Palatka, but across the state, and people are taking notice of the things that are going on in Palatka. So, we will continue to move on. The Bible says, "The greatest among the yeest servants," and that's what we continue, we will continue to do, and that is to serve.